Good afternoon, welcome everybody. We are so glad you're here. It's good to see all of you and it's rare that we have an item in a community association where everyone is impacted, you know, something that affects us everyone on such a basic level and we appreciate your being here. This is one of those topics. At this year's annual meeting, when the president mentioned that one of our strategic objectives was to improve cellular service, this was the only item that received applause. So, we were very pleased with that. So, I'm happy to be here and discussing this item at this time. We have today Jack Roberts and Dan Bohuniac who are here to address improved cellular service within our community and in the greater community. And we're pleased that Jack Roberts is here because he is an AIPCA member. He owns several properties here. He is also a resident at the sanctuary next door. He is an Amelia Island Club member and today he is a concerned citizen who has a very keen interest in this project because this is his home. We're also pleased to have expert and advisor Dan Bohuniac here. He is CEO of Skyway Towers. Now, Skyway Towers has the mission to provide high-quality broadband towers to wireless carriers, to governments, to communities like ours, to meet their goal of deploying their next-generation wireless networks. Dan and his team have built over 1,500 towers nationwide and he has 300 sites in development. So, we're glad that both of them are here. And gentlemen, I will let you take it away.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have lived on Amelia Island since '93. I've been on the plantation since '98 on a couple of properties here. And by happenstance, I've been around the telecom business for over 30 years. And for some of those years, I was the chairman and CEO of the largest company involved in measuring the wireless industry. Everything about it. Markets, advertising, pricing, perceptions, network quality and all of that sort of thing. So, I come at this from a point of view of having a bit of experience. As I have continued to live on Amelia Island, I move farther south each time. And the farther south I've moved, the worse things have gotten in terms of telecom coverage. You've all experienced this undoubtedly. Well, why is that? And the answer is that mobile that you carry around is too far from the antennas and the base stations which link you to the rest of the world. Nearest antennas to you are Lewis Street and Julia Street. That's why on the north end, you can get okay coverage, but in the middle and the south of the plantation, it's pretty bad. In fact, it's so bad that I consider it unworthy of a community like ours and of a world-class resort. So, I think it needs fixing. And to fix it, we need towers. Everybody wishes that were not the case, but it is. We have to have towers. So, what do you need to do to have the towers you need? Well, first, you need about 5,600 square feet of flat land, zoned appropriately. You also need it to be located where the carriers want it, the cellular providers. And where do they want it? They want it such that they can get the maximum amount of coverage for their dollar. So, they don't want a huge amount of overlap and they don't want a lot of gaps. They want it to be just right. We have selected a couple of sites which we think do that. You also need access to roads and power and telecom assets. You need the roads to go right up to the compound that I've described because you have to bring in heavy trucks to do the construction and to do the maintenance of these facilities. You've got cranes to erect the tower and to do maintenance on them. So, you need roads. You need power because these things are all electrical. Most of the carriers will have backup generators and batteries, but they run off of normal FPU-type power most of the time. You also need fiber and other telecom assets. So, you can't just put it anywhere. There are certain locations that work and many that don't. Preferably, it's not close to any occupied buildings because a lot of people worry about them falling. Towers almost never fall, but there's still a sense of concern about it. So, not close to occupied buildings is better. And of course, everyone would like them to be invisible, but they are not. Second choice is newbie, not in my backyard. Well, we're working on that. And the truth of the matter is that you can't have it perfectly, but we think there is a way to have the maximum improvement in service with a minimum impact on the community. We've worked collaboratively with the Omni, with the club, with the AIPCA, and there's general agreement that A, we need help and B, these sites might be very well workable. So, two towers, the fewest we think can achieve the result. I believe, based on our studies, that they won't be visible from inside any single-family dwellings. They will be quite visible from the two driving ranges, Long Point and Oak Marsh. They won't be visible from the restaurants, although I can find two tables in the bar at Long Point where you can see it. Don't sit there if it bothers you. We think you will be able to see it from the upper floors of the Omni, but you will see it only from the walkways that you use to get to your room. You will see it from the upper floors of a couple of the condos like Dunes Club and Seaside Retreat, but you will see it from the guest bedrooms of those places and that's just the way it is. You will see it from some of the streets glimpses sometimes if you happen to be looking in the right direction at the right angle. And there are a couple of spots on a couple of fairways where you might see it if you're erroneously not keeping your head down. So, overall, we think we've done the best we can on that. The plan involves cutting no trees. They'll be put in open areas where they're being used for mulch right now and other things. So, no trees are cut. They're already surrounded. The base of the tower will already be surrounded by natural vegetation. To the extent that that ever proves to be insufficient, more can be planted. There'll be no out-of-pocket cost to anyone on the plantation, not the club, not the association, not the Omni, nobody will pay any out-of-pocket money. And nothing about this as far as we know and believe is hazardous to anyone. So, that's the outline of the overall plan. We think it's good, not perfect, solves a lot of problems, creates a minimum of new problems. Dan Bohuniac, the expert here, is a guy I've known for 21 years. Dan and his team have built and owned a lot of towers and they have been willing to work collaboratively with all of the constituents here to try to achieve the best outcome. So, Dan, sure show.
Okay. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background for those of you who don't know it. The way we worked with the Omni and with the AIPCA, we, and with the Long Point Club, we took a look at all the locations that we could possibly consider on the golf courses. And the maintenance areas of both seem to be ideal because of the infrastructure that Jack mentioned with telecom, fiber and power to those locations. It was perfect. They had areas where they were storing mulch. To make sure that everyone would be as comfortable as possible, we flew balloons. We're talking about 150-foot towers, so we flew balloons up so that the folks who were interested could go take a look at how high they were. And some of the pictures that I'm going to be showing you today took those. We also went around and took a lot of pictures from a lot of different angles just so that people could see what it would look like from various places. And then what we've done is we've overlaid the tower to the height of where the balloon was so that you can actually see what it'll look like. So, as Jack mentioned, we've been building towers since 1995 and we used, we worked not just with the folks on the island to pick these locations, but we also worked with both Verizon and T-Mobile. Sprint and AT&amp;T are currently in a period of upgrading, they're trying to, frankly, they're trying to catch Verizon on 4G deployment. And so, they've been upgrading their existing sites. They're not really building any new sites. So, they really didn't have any input into this process yet, but just from my background in the industry, these locations will suit them too. But both T-Mobile and Verizon have said they will support these sites. They had input into the selection and they will help us through the zoning process by saying we need them. So, we mentioned the unipole. Some of you, when you come in on the island from the south end, just as you're about to cross over the bridge, there is a standard monopole. Within the industry, we've heard it described as a toilet brush or egg beater or other things. So, what we've selected here is a unipole. This one we built on the Brandon YMCA and so that's an example of the unipole. The antennas go inside that tower and so that's all you will ever see. It won't have anything hanging on the outside. So, as you can see, when you see a monopole, they have a bunch of antennas in them. What happens here is Verizon may take two of the canisters. The canisters are anywhere from eight to 10 feet tall. Verizon sometimes takes three. The other ones take two. And so, you have to be over the tree line anyway and your average tree line is about 60, 65 feet on the island. So, it's 150 feet to allow us to have enough canisters for all four carriers. And one of the reasons why you want to have all four carriers, if you can't fit all four carriers, you need to build more towers. And so, the zoning boards really encourage you to minimize the number, and so do the residents typically, minimize the number of towers on the island. Just to give you a little bit of background, we'll speed through this, but the history of cellular, frankly, I, this island has about the worst coverage I've ever run into in the last five or seven years. And that is due to a lot of things, but your trees are absolutely gorgeous, but trees eat RF signal. There's moisture, there's water in the leaves and so that interferes with the radiation. And over time, the growth in usage, the original phones, the 1984 cellular phones were meant for voice. They were not meant for data. And they, everybody thought, even the president of New York Telephone forecast in 1984 that there would be no more than 1 million users of cellphones because he felt that they were a rich man's toy. And that was a bell system officer. So, he's been proven wrong. And what's happened is really the inflection point in my mind is June 29th, 2007, when the iPhone was introduced. And when the iPhone was introduced, data started becoming important. Data, the ability to take pictures and surf the web. And when someone is surfing the web, that is the equivalent of 10 voice calls. So, right away, AT&amp;T, which was, had the only right to sell the iPhone, they weren't prepared for it. Their network sagged. They got a lot of bad publicity, particularly in New York and San Francisco. And so, Verizon saw what happened. They didn't have the right to sell the iPhone, but they immediately started upgrading their network so that when they did have the right to sell the iPhone and the Droid phones, their network would be able to handle it. And so, that's, that kind of was the impetus for the race that started. That race wound up with added features, lower costs in some ways, but higher costs, but it was, it was a product that more and more people wanted to use. So, when you take a look at the usage, you know, from 1997 through 2012, your penetration is now over 100% in the country because people use more than one device. And so, it's gone up five times. Your voice minutes have gone from 5.8 billion to nearly 200 billion. Monthly data usage, which didn't exist in '97, was 139 billion megabits. That's a lot of traffic. And so, and, oh, and by the way, wireless-only households, people are dropping their wireless phones, I mean wireline phones. They're just disconnecting and they're placing their safety and comfort and features on the wireless phones. So, and the FCC has now come to the point where it has designated wireless an essential service. And I hate to use the phrase "public utility," but it is getting some of the same rights as public utilities for placement of facilities. And the FCC has just started an inquiry. They designated someone to take charge of this. They are looking at how to manage gracefully the discontinuance of wireline communications. They just don't want it to unfold willy-nilly. They want to get out ahead of it. So, it's one of those rare areas where the government wants to get out ahead of something. What's happened in the past is going to continue even, even worse. The only reason I'm showing you that slope is because you can't see the numbers, but that goes all the way out to 2016. 2012 is right there in the middle and you can see the slope. The yellow is data over mobile PCs and tablets. The blue is data over your cellphone. And the red on the bottom, that's voice. That's really stable. So, it's now all about data, which data you have to get much closer to the user. And so, it's, it's going to get worse. If you don't get more signal into your homes, it's going to get worse because the more people who are trying to make calls and use those antennas on the towers, the more you're going to get crowded out. It's just like trying to put, you know, 100 gallons of water through a garden hose. You're going to have to wait your turn to get through. These are the locations that we've picked. The Amelia, Amelia 1 on that chart is Oak Marsh and the maintenance area. Amelia 2 is the Long Point. They're actually perfectly spaced for what we need because the signal obviously is stronger the closest, closer you are to the towers. So, as it gets away, as you go further away, if this, if they were spaced further, that area in the middle would probably start degrading. But you're typically in good shape if you're within a mile and those circles are a mile. You're typically in pretty good shape. The only thing that's unpredictable in my mind when I look at this, at this island, is your magnificent tree coverage. Your, it's beautiful, but it's painful for RF. But spacing them the way we have there, just two miles apart from each other, I think we're in good shape. Now, when you look at this also, by the way, RF signals can travel five miles. So, if you're a boater, you're probably going to have really much better service out on the water. And if you live in an area that doesn't have trees, you're really going to have good service. But here's the unpredictability. And I'm always showing you this. This was a different location. You see that, those two, they look like an atomic energy design. Those, each one of those is a cell site. And you can see how the coverage is solid around them and then the one that's in the middle is a proposed site. And you can see how ragged the RF coverage is getting as it's, as it's getting toward that yellow area. And what's really interesting about this is take a look at, it's skipping over, the RF is skipping over some of the yellow and getting up into the hills. This is up in Idaho. And so, it's far away. It's like four or five miles away is better than a mile and a half away. So, I just wanted to show you, when you're looking at the diagrams that we gave you with those little circles, it's not really that precise. Here's some of the photo sims we talked about. We floated the balloons and then overlaid, photoshopped the tower onto the picture. This is Oak Marsh leaving the West Villas. Oak Marsh from the driving range. Long Point from the cart staging area.
It's over, it's midway. You see a tree there, you see a ladder.
Well, if you couldn't see that one, you can't see that one. So, that's, that's the driving range at Long Point. I am particularly proud of the fact that we have been able to find locations, working with our landlord partners, that yes, they're visible. They're 150 feet tall, but they have to be because if they're down lower than, instead of frankly, if this is a house, the signal, and there's a tree here, the signal only has to go through one tree to get to that house. If you have it down low and you have a tree here, a tree here and a tree here, it has to go through the trees. So, that's why they have to be so tall. They also have to be tall enough to cover, the lower they are, the more towers you need. And so, I think we've found locations that absolutely minimize the view. You'll see them from the highway. You'll see them while you're playing golf. There may be some neighborhoods where someone may be able to look through their trees and see it, but I, I think we've done well in minimizing that to the extent we can. Oh, by the way, there are going to be far more pictures that Joe is putting up on the, on the website, the AIPCA website. So, there are a couple dozen from different angles. I always include, you know, what are some of the, some of the services, healthcare. I will, I'll cut through this. We'll put this on, on the website as well. But really what's starting to happen, like CBS, I think it was in March, CBS Morning Moves reported that there are now nearly 44,000 medical health and fitness apps. Things are like, here's one of my favorites because, you know, we're all reaching the age, we remember what it was like to take care of our parents. And a pill that sends a message to the caregiver. So, someone can live in their house longer independently because their doctor or their caregiver knows that they're taking their meds because when the pill hits your stomach and reacts with the enzymes, it sends off a signal that connects with the phone, which then connects and sends a message to your caregiver or your doctor. I have a friend that was having fainting spells and they were getting longer and longer. And they always happened when he was sitting down. And so, he would just topple over and, and be unconscious for 10, 15, 20 seconds. So, he went to his cardiologist. They could find nothing wrong. So, what, they put a phone on his belt and he wound up passing out for 30 seconds. He called the doctor's answering bureau. The answering bureau got the message from the phone and said, told him, "You need to get to the hospital right away. Your heart stopped for 30 seconds." It was not a heart attack. And so, he went to the hospital. They put in a pacemaker and he's fine now. But, you know, there are all these cool things, aside from the fact that 70% of your 911 calls are made on wireless devices. I, it's just, we rely on these things and there's so many more uses for them. They're just becoming so valuable in, in our lifetimes. So, these are just emergency services, some of the examples of what's going on with the Red Cross and others. The healthcare things that we talked about. We mentioned, you know, those. Oh, and I, okay. So, we, we work with Verizon and T-Mobile. And so, Jack and Joe have asked me several times, "How long is this going to take?" It really comes up to the, comes out to be the, up to the zoning boards. And the more support that we can muster for it, the quicker it will go. If we run into opposition, it will take longer. If it winds up going into court, it could take years. But it typically is, if it's going to go through well, and so far it looks like it is. We've been in touch with the county and they seem to be on board for the need. We've given them an outline. They've helped us, you know, with the heights and, and they've given us some, some of their feedback already. So, it looks positive, but you know government, they won't guarantee anything. You have to file the application and put it out for notice and all those kinds of things, so, which we are going to do. But from the time that we make that filing to the time we get the approval, it's typically six to nine months. And then afterwards, then after we get the approval, the construction period is, is quick, 45 days or something like that. And I mentioned AT&amp;T and Sprint and I really do believe, we're starting to see AT&amp;T and Sprint, by the way, after a couple, a couple of years of being indolent, starting to really gear up for 2015, 2016. And they really do because Verizon has lost no, no time. They jumped out ahead of everybody to put in their 4G networks and while everybody's trying to catch up to them on 4G, they have been, they call it a densification program. They're just putting in more towers, more equipment, getting their services closer to the customer. And from what I can tell here on Amelia Island, they have a long way to go. I'm on a Verizon phone and it just, it's not good. I guess that's it. So, questions? Yes?
Let's assume we put this tower up a year or two ago. AT&amp;T was kind of sleeping.
Yeah.
Would we have AT&amp;T service by now or they just moved them up?
No, I think, I think when these go up, you're going to see AT&amp;T going, look, AT&amp;T knows their service is bad on the island. They have, we call them sell-on wheels. They have a cow parked permanently on the, in the Omni parking lot, right by the garage because they know that's, there's a usage, you know, companies have their outings there and so they know it's terrible. They're going to put antennas, it's my understanding, they're going to put antennas up on the roof on the Omni in order to help that. But they're also going to need these because it's just, like I said, between the trees and the usage on the island, it, I think they're going to go, they're certainly going to go to the one at, down at Long Point. I mean, I know they're going to go on that one. Yes?
I saw that there's another tower, American Beach Tower.
Yes.
Is that going to interfere or help?
No. These are going to, these, the industry, the towers that are nearby are called neighboring towers. And if you looked at the spacing, that one is right at the edge. And if you looked at the spacing, that one is right at the edge, it's not within the plantation, I don't think, but it's, it's right at the edge. So, the coverage is going to lay out perfectly for that tower. In addition to that, we're working with Verizon because one of the things that Joe asked us to do was work with the carriers on a long-term plan. Something, instead of one, I'm going to paraphrase your exact words, instead of one site now and one site three years from now, tell us what is the layout that you need so that we can figure out where, and if we have to reserve some areas, we'll reserve them for the future. And so, when we talked to the Verizon and T-Mobile guys, because they were willing to, to spend some resources with us, they actually took a look at the maps and talked to their RF people. And it was Verizon who said, "We'd also like another one." So, but it's up even further north of the one that you're referring to. So, while they have this opportunity to make this case that we're making with the county, they want to take advantage of that because they've been struggling with the county on getting sites within it. And then, of course, there's Fernandina Beach, which has its own rules and may be a little bit more difficult to deal with. But the, but, but the more momentum we can build for this, the better. So, and, so I, I just think that what you're going to see here is a movement, you've got the Omni business, the business community, you've got the AIPCA, you've got other homeowners' associations which have indicated support for it, and you've got locations that the carriers like. And they really, it, it's kind of a no-brainer to look at those locations and say, and say, "Okay, you know, this is kind of a painless way to do it." So, yes, in back?
My question is, will this help us with our reception? We live in Ocean Club Villas and we purchased one of those M cells or booster boxes from AT&amp;T. We have that, but they say it's because our condos have so much metal in them that we don't get good reception. Will the tower help us?
It should help because metal and concrete also, in addition to trees, metal and concrete do interfere. So, that just means you have to have the tower closer in order to penetrate in. I say it should, I don't know when it comes to how much concrete is in there, how much metal is in there. I will say, without really trying to disparage the people who say these things, they often are looking for excuses to say it's not their network, it's someone else's fault. So, I, I, I have a condo down at the beach and it has a lot of concrete and metal in it. And I have service. So, you, you'll, you'll know in a year whether, whether it will really help. Yes?
I just had a comment that I wanted to throw in that might be of interest to people. My brother-in-law lives on Wax Myrtle, right over here, eighth of a mile from where we're sitting now. He's a T-Mobile customer. And in the last six weeks, he's totally lost the ability to get cellphone calls at his house. After going through three or four layers of bureaucracy at T-Mobile and finally getting to someone who would tell him something substantial, he was told that they, T-Mobile has turned the antenna at antenna, at American Beach, further north.
Yeah.
Which I suspect is due to their issues with the city of Fernandina Beach and other things. So, they're trying to do things for other people which in, in that respect have hurt us.
Yeah. And I, the minute you said what you said, I suspected that was the case. What they're doing is, they know what, when you look at a cell tower, that one that I, I referred to, those antennas are put on a, each sector is 120 degrees. So, you'll see three, three packages. They can aim those antennas to where they're getting the worst service to try to correct it. And so, it's like a short sheet, you know, you pull it up to your chest, your feet get cold. Yeah, yeah. And so, I don't know how many antennas they, they, they have up on that, up on that tower. But typically, the way to solve that issue is not to turn an antenna, it's to add another antenna. But if they've already added, if they've got four on each face, then they've got another problem. So, yes?
Yeah, I have T-Mobile. In the last couple of months, the same thing. I mean, I've always had trouble, but I always put it, have to put it on wireless, you know, just through the cell. And then, half the time, it still won't send anything with cell. I mean, you just might as well throw the phone out. It's really, really mad.
My suggestion is complain. You may think it's not going to get anywhere, but they do count their complaints. And we have a very good working relationship with, with T-Mobile, right? And, and actually, our, our strongest relationships are with the regional guys who manage the local guys and headquarters in Washington, not Washington DC, the left coast, Washington. And so, the more we can point to the, the folks complaining in this area, the quicker that any, any questions about budgeting and getting on the towers will be settled.
Are they, are they going to go ahead and put them up or do we have to vote or what is, what do we have to do?
What the process from here will be that Skyway will sign leases with the Omni for the Oak Marsh site and with the club for the Long Point site. Those will be then tentative based on zoning. They'll go to the zoning board, people showing up at the zoning board to say, "We want this" would be helpful. But there's really nothing anyone has to do. If there is a large consensus that says, "Oh, no, we don't want this," then, you know, the various constituencies here, the community association, the Omni and the club would probably turn back. If there's no negative consensus, then it would move forward and, and go along the path that I've suggested. Joe, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay.
And typically, to, to kind of magnify what Jack said, the, the people who are opposed, I don't care what the issue, what, what the issue is, the people who are opposed to something are normally the ones who show up at meetings, write letters, that kind of thing. The people who are for something, just as kind of, I don't know whether they just assume it's going to go through and be approved or whatever. So, if, if, if you really are in support of this, all I would ask you to do, someone's going to oppose this. I mean, they oppose it everywhere we go, there's always someone who opposes it. So, all I would ask you to do is, if you're, if you're in favor of it, either send a letter to the zoning board, that, they're politicians. They need to know that they've got political cover. And they've got to be able to say, if they've got nothing but negatives coming in, they're assuming that everybody on the island is opposed to it. But if they're getting a mixed bag and they know it's the right thing to do, every once in a while, politicians will do the right thing if they feel that they've got cover.
When you're dealing with government authorities to get something approved, highly recommend you stress public safety. That's a trigger with them. And you, you can use examples that we have here on the south end of the island. We've had people in Long Point, Marsh Creek and other areas pick up their cellphone to dial 911 or an emergency. And because of atmospheric conditions, they do call County 911 answers. They don't know where Long Point is, they don't know where Marsh Creek is.
Wow.
So, I just want to stress that with the county, our county authorities to get the permission.
Yes, in the back?
Okay, just, just one question I'll talk about. Has there been any studies, statistical studies done showing real estate values versus the, you know, the quality of cell coverage? Or is it just too new and moving to the fence?
No, it, actually, there, there are studies. And there were studies that were done, I'd say, from 12 years back to, you know, further back. And the studies that were there indicated that there may be a negative reaction to it on, on, on housing values. On housing values.
On housing values?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm about to get to that. Then, starting about 10 years ago, and these are, these are studies by the licensed appraisers, you know, not, not real estate agents. Real estate agents tend to react subjectively based upon their own experience, anecdotal experience. But these were, these are studies that have been done by licensed appraisers. And what they have discovered, and it really started ramping up after the iPhone, what they've discovered is that there was either a neutral to added value to having a good telecommunications infrastructure. And when, right. And when they, when, when people dug deeper, what they, what they discovered, and it's, you know, you can pay for, you know, studies, but common sense will tell you, the younger the person, the more important it was to have a good telecom infrastructure. And the people who were at the prime home buying ages, the people all the way up to like 50, 55 now, and I'm looking back at that, are, are, from there, if you take them in chunks of 10 to 15 years, it's all that much more important. And, and even real estate, things are, I think it was in ABC, I, I, the, one of the national news media covered this story and they had a bunch of quotes, but the bottom line of, and, and England ran a similar study. But the bottom line is that people are now telling their real estate agents that, "I won't buy a home without solid RF." And earlier in this week, I was with, with a, with an attorney who told me that he was just, he's in the process of buying another home and that's exactly what he told his real estate agent. So...
We should make sure to get message as part of the message that goes out, not just let go message but the whole real estate values because it's just going to get worse as more people demand this.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay, wait a minute, you're the one who's handling the microphone, who's that? Okay.
This is a comment. The facts that you've cited, the criteria that Jack gave, the community impact that Joe would be able to describe and as the, as, as the year goes on and so forth, there's a national magazine called Common Ground. Every once in a while, homeowner associations do the right thing, they do it in the right way. And an article from the three of you in that magazine would be of tremendous subsequent value to this community. So, not only would you be improving the life quality for those of us who live here right now, you'd be bringing attention to the community and how to do this right for our future.
Joe's getting his, his exercise, he's not going to have to get on treadmill this afternoon.
This pole that you put up, how reliable is it? Because we have another place in, in Colorado and the whole cell system went down for about two weeks. I mean, I don't know what kind of antenna they have, but, I mean, from what you described, it has canisters. So, if it went down, you just put a new canister in or?
Yeah, yeah, what, the, the canisters have three, sometimes as many as four antennas in them. And so, if one of those antenna goes dead, and that's the one that aims at your house, they're, they're very reliable. I, I mean, but every once in a while, one will go down. The other thing is that if the carrier goes in, if he has a trouble and he goes in to try to work on it, if it, if it's a part that he's got to order or something like that, it can take a week or two before he gets it. You would think that they would have them on stock, but depending upon what the part is, sometimes they don't. So...
Two questions?
Yes.
First, I noticed the, the unipole that you have up, there's like a little bunker house at the bottom.
Yes.
Will ours have that little bunker house also?
Yes. And that little, that little, it's a fenced-in area. And so, we work with the landlords and the zoning boards to design it the way they want it. And so, but they're typically eight feet of non-climbable fencing of some sort. And behind that, the reason they're eight feet tall is so that both Verizon and AT&amp;T actually put a shelter in that have their electronic equipment. T-Mobile and Sprint, historically, use outdoor cabinets, so they need less space. But because they use a shelter, it's higher, it's like six and a half to seven feet tall, but you can't see it. And then, but these locations are, they have natural vegetation around them. So, even if you were standing next to them at the driving range or on the golf course, I'm going to be careful about saying this, this is my recollection, even if you were standing within 100 feet of them on the golf course, on the fairway, you would not see that lower fenced-in area because my recollection is that that growth all around it is taller than that.
So, it's not going to be painted orange or red or yellow or?
But, but to the extent that it's insufficient, more plantings will be done until you can't see it.
Yeah.
And the last question, if I may, we have an airport right nearby, are we going to have to get some kind of approval from the FAA for the 150-foot tower?
No, we already did that, we already looked at it. And no one was more shocked than I when we got the FAA study that came back. Apparently, the planes land in a different direction because the height limitation was it could go up to 430 feet tall without requiring any kind of lighting. And so, you know, number one, you're happy it doesn't have lighting. And number two, we were happy that we didn't have a problem. So...
Does this mean that we can use our phones in the house and we don't have to stand on the porch when it's raining? Yeah? I mean, because I have Verizon and so do my kids, and when they come, everybody goes outside.
Yeah.
Okay. Next question. You talk about the fact that landlines are going to go away. How do I get in if I don't landline?
Because now, I'm not, okay, here's what's happening. The stuff, the things that I showed you on those slides are things that are there today. Where Verizon is going with this and AT&amp;T, you, you all know that AT&amp;T, well, maybe you don't, AT&amp;T is buying DirecTV, the company. Dish Networks is looking at perhaps buying or partnering with either, partnering with Sprint or perhaps buying T-Mobile. There is a merger of, of, just like telephone service now merged with data and internet searches, LTE is capable of competing with the cable networks now to provide you internet access. And it is becoming capable of providing television and entertainment. So, the LTE and Verizon's going to start next summer, I believe it is, they're going to start providing in whatever limited areas they decide to provide it, they're going to start providing their television services and it's à la carte. It's not, you don't have to buy plans. It's à la carte. If you only watch nine or 19 television stations, you would only subscribe to those, you get, would get to pick. They're going after the cable companies. They're going after the cable companies. They're starting by doing it over Wi-Fi. So, you would have your Wi-Fi connection in your house, and your Wi-Fi connection would be connected to whatever internet provider you have today. Once, but the next step is, within the next, certainly within five years, more likely within three or four, you won't have to go to the internet. If your service is good enough, you're going to be able to provide your entertainment, your internet, your telephone service, all through LTE with the traffic going back up to that tower. And then, from the tower, it'll go to your internet. So, long answer, but these guys, there's a war that's about to be started between the wireless companies and the cable companies. That's one of the reasons why the cable companies, they see this coming. And they're putting all these partnerships together to put Wi-Fi everywhere, because now they know that they need some kind of a wireless thing so that they can say, "Well, we provide wireless, we provide internet, we provide, you know, home phone service." They want to be able to do that. The problem with that Wi-Fi is, it's limited. It's not up on the towers. And so, you know, it's, I wish I was going to live long enough to see the way this stuff is going to...
But the bottom line is that if you didn't put these two towers up, we couldn't experience any.
You could not, yeah.
You'd still have the same lousy phone service.
Exactly.
So, continue tomorrow.
Okay.
That's right.
Good. Well, I see we've spent an hour, and it's been a very good hour. I want to thank everyone for being here today, and remember to, when in the right time, let's be sure and contact zoning board.
Will you tell us?
We will definitely tell you. Your community association will let you know.
Just one last question. Have you heard any levels of discontent at all, or are you just anticipating this?
It happens every time somewhere along the way. First, secondly, we've had a few people express some concern about the appearance, and I understand that. It's the best we can do.